Everyone's fine. Still getting a paycheck. We appreciate that. Tell me about Live View. Who's doing this live on their webpage? Anybody? Anybody?
We are.
You are? Okay. Good, good. I was gonna say then I don't have to record this.
What? You steal from us?
Do we steal from you? Is the Pope Catholic? Okay. Good. If it's a press conference...
It helps us more as our staff dwindles.
Who else? Yeah. Who else? Mary Ann. Yeah.
That makes complete sense.
That was a tough one. That article. That whole... Yeah. I mean, just makes you feel bad for all of you guys.
She was a great... She is a great reporter. So we lost two more people at our place.
Did you for what? Just operating?
Yeah. Just like... Oh, we're being more political.
You're not doing like for loans or anything?
For loans, yeah.
I know.
We're just cutting... They're not paying people. They're cutting some part timers and like little bits like... Is that really saving them?
Which station in town is gonna be the first?
Say that again.
One of major stations in town is gonna be the first.
Oh, yeah. Nobody's trying to do layoffs.
It all depends. I think I'm a bunch of ones. I know you're doing that well. How...
The network.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. We have a lot of editors except buyouts in the early summer. And then, you know, things never gonna kill anybody. People get felled and cracked. And then the other editor took a buyout. So it's now... Has more than been affected or... Those stories are hard to watch.
Yeah.
It's just bad news. But everybody involved is believing it. So that's why it's so sad.
We got a couple people.
I just don't believe for a second. I mean, Chang, everybody behind me. I hardly care. Because I know him personally and I just don't.
Yeah. We got Mike Caputo over there.
There's no buyouts.
He's over 11? Where's the...
I'm over at Metronom.
Well, is Metronom tired?
We're the biggest.
Somebody is going for...
Wait, Crustop.
Who's going?
Bill Crustop. Where are you?
For a shooting job.
Kind of. Yeah. Yeah.
Is he working under Bonnie Hartley?
I don't know. I work up to that. I know.
This is Susie.
No, I'm not. I'm trying to send you my email to tell it to my phone when I'm driving. But I can't turn it off. Okay. It's a secret. It's S.I.E.
How you doing? Ken, how you doing? Good to see you.
Dr. George K. O'Neal S. At Entercom. And Seal. Dot com.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Steve, how are you?
Should we get a new white balance? Are you gonna put that on?
Here you go. All right. Thanks. Bye. Sorry, Mayor. They're getting a white balance off my shirt.
Oh, no. Your thing.
But they could easily get it off yours.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ready for me?
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Did you take this through the night?
Eh, you know. Diaper duty.
Yeah. Right.
Right. Thanks so much, everyone, for joining us here this afternoon. Council Vice President, proud to be alongside you and all of the staff who may be the only ones in the room that have been burning the midnight oil more than I have these last several nights. I very much appreciate all of your work. So we learned just a couple of hours ago that several Minneapolis nonprofits were getting an additional $4 million to do very important community building, affordable housing, and economic inclusion work right here in our city. That's an infusion of $4 million to help those that are struggling most and help those that need to see the gains of some of the economic development that we will inevitably see over the next several years. And now we're marking yet another very positive step forward for our local economy. And thanks to the really diligent work from people here in the room, I am proud to announce that we will be starting to move forward with an additional $7 million allocation for recovery here in Minneapolis and for very important economic inclusion work. So first, we're moving forward with an additional $2 million in direct support for cleanup funds. That's cleanup funds to support rubble clearance, to filling holes, which we know is a very essential prerequisite for ultimately rebuilding as we're on the road for transformation. Not to mention, we know that the rubble that we've seen in the areas following the unrest after George Floyd's killing does lead to public health concerns, it leads to public safety concerns, and inhibits economic growth and development, inclusive economic growth and development, from ultimately happening. So our staff has been on the ground, working tirelessly since around June, and this marks now a continuation in that very important commitment. And we're also aware of the limitations that our small businesses are facing. When you've been hit hard by a sandwiching of numerous crises on top of one another, ranging from COVID-19 to an economic downturn to the unrest following the killing of George Floyd, it's difficult to pay that additional $100,000 just to clear the rubble, to get back to a point where your business can reopen. And so the $2 million in funding that we are proposing right now will help about 16 different sites at about $100,000-plus per site. And that money will come, in some cases, from community development and block grants funds, along with restricted and unrestricted CDBG funds which had gone unspent in prior years. Secondly, our Minneapolis Forward Community Now Coalition, which is our cross-sector team that is devoted to transformation and recovery at the same time. They're pushing for a more resilient, inclusive, and innovative city. They've delivered recommendations on eight different subject matter areas just last month. Those recommendations covered strategies ranging from business navigators to supports for businesses, to even gap financing, to make sure that businesses and building owners, to-be building owners, would have the necessary patient capital to move forward. And so thanks again to their very hard work and the strong team and standing commitment that they've put forward. We've also been doing that work as part of our Commercial Property Development Fund. And you may have heard me talk about this before, but the purpose of the Commercial Property Development Fund is to provide both would-be developers and small business with patient debt capital on favorable terms to facilitate the acquisition and/or completion of commercial real estate development in areas here in Minneapolis. And I want to be very clear. These monies are to facilitate our Black and Indigenous communities of color and immigrants in making sure that they have the ability, not just to own their own business, but to own the real estate beneath that business. And so when we see the gains in the economy, when we see the prices get jacked, the communities, the small business owners that have made these communities and corridors wonderful to begin with, don't get the boot. Rather, with the CPDF fund, we can bridge those gaps. We can get them to not just be business owners, but building owners, and they can reap the gains of the economic inclusion activity that we anticipate seeing in the coming years. So we had already ceded this particular Commercial Property Development Fund with $2.9 million in the 2020 budget and have already... That money has already gone towards a commitment to the redevelopment of 927 West Broadway. And very shortly here, we see the Baldwin Square, which is another significant development over on 4146 Freeman Avenue North, should be coming through the council just this next week. The Coalition also identified a set of additional projects that they deem will support recovery of our city and address longstanding issues of wealth disparities. And so now, today, we're proposing to move forward with an additional $5 million for the Commercial Property Development Fund, and it's gonna come from a relatively restricted account. That's where the funding source comes from. And it's going to accelerate some of the recommended projects that, in some cases, are already in the pipeline, in some cases, haven't been fostered yet. And again, the vision of that CPDF fund is to leverage city funds with donations from both private and philanthropic sources. And the Coalition members will be joining me in some of the fundraising efforts that will be happening over the next several weeks and months. Those fundraising efforts are all underway. To be clear, this is about recovery. This is about, yes, rebuilding, but most importantly, this is about transformation. We have the opportunity right now to do things differently. We have the opportunity right now to center our Black and Indigenous communities of color, not just in the conversation at the table, but also to make sure that they're key beneficiaries of the decisions that are being made, so that as we rebuild, we rebuild with equity. As we rebuild, we rebuild with economic inclusion. And so we're very clear-eyed about the path forward that we have right now, and we know that this road forward is... It's not gonna be easy. It's gonna be really tough, and so we're gonna need absolutely everyone at the table. And it needs to be a team effort. The Minneapolis Small Businesses, businesses, help keep Minnesota running, and we also need the state of Minnesota to step up as well, to help us get to those final figures. And we need our private sector as well to step up and support some of this very important work that they will ultimately be beneficiaries of. And so I know I'll continue to work with our team at the city to advocate for those necessary supports. And you know, this is about recovery. This is about making sure that one year and 16 months and 10 years from now, Minneapolis made decisions in a timely fashion to put ourselves on not just the road to recovery, but the road to true economic inclusion. And with that, I will turn it over to my friend and our Council Vice President and also Minneapolis Forward Community Now Coalition Partner, Council Vice President Andrea Jenkins.
Thank you so much, Mayor Frye, and good afternoon, everyone. As the mayor indicated, my name is Andrea Jenkins. I'm the Vice President of the Minneapolis City Council. And you know, I wanted to stand here with the mayor today as we make this announcement to really think about transformational change in our city. And what is really interesting to me is that many of these projects, many of these concepts and ideas, we have already been working towards. The Commercial Development Fund is a fund that we've been working on for multiple years now, and we're now enhancing those funds in order to meet the recovery needs that are standing before us. So I just want to take a moment to thank our staff for their forward thinking, as well as for their really challenging work in this challenging environment. I want to thank the members of the Minneapolis Coalition Community Forward Now. It's a long title. But for all of their partnership, they have been working really hard in eight different area, topic areas. And one of the things that they are continuously pressing upon us is the need to invest in and support our communities of color. As you know, the cultural corridors is work that we have been doing ahead of time prior to this, and it feeds right into these recovery efforts, as many of the cultural corridors that we had identified are some of the areas in our city that have seen the most damage. And so we have been on this path. However, it is time for us to do more, to take advantage of this transformational moment in Minneapolis history and redress some of the issues and concerns that have been really keeping our communities of color and keeping this gap between the broader community and communities of color at its highest point and in some areas, some of the highest disparities in the country. So I look forward to working with Mayor Frye as we develop these new programs. Many of them are along the 38th Street corridor, which feeds into our response to be able to redress some of the harms that have been done in that community. As many of you know, that's the site where George Floyd met his untimely demise, and so it's good to know that we're working in those areas. And I thank you all, and I guess we'll be taking questions if they should arise. I'm not sure who's speaking next.
I'm gonna hop up and just thank a few people, and then we'll jump right in. Also, just want to acknowledge a few of the staff that are in the room that did such an extraordinary job in bringing us to this point. Eric Hansen and Jim Terrill have done a ton of work on both CPDF, Commercial Property Development Fund, as well as Minneapolis Forward, our interim CPED Director, Andrea Brennan, Ken Stallow, and Steve Poor have been phenomenal as well. We very much appreciate their work. I think I got everyone. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can you just, Mayor, if we're lying off the top, you mentioned that $4 million, the nonprofits came... The first thing you said I did wrong.
Yeah.
Where did they get that $4 million?
So that...
Can you just kind of briefly go over the numbers? So is that $4 million plus what else?
Sure. So the question was to go through each one of the numbers that I referenced and just explain where it came from and perhaps where it was going to.
That's all right.
Yeah. Sure. The $4 million was announced at an event that I attended earlier today. The monies are a contribution from J.P. Morgan Chase, the bank, and goes to a series of different nonprofits, including Hope Community, the Family Housing Fund, there's a number of others. And those monies are specifically going towards both two- and four-unit largely naturally affordable housing buildings to be owned by, in some cases, individuals that are already living there, and to further the ownership of community members. So it's not just out-of-town, out-of-state landowners. It is wealth that can be generated by and then for community, and that's a really important step. And so that... But to be clear, that $4 million is not city money. That $4 million was a very generous contribution from Chase. But as for today, right now, there is $2 million that is going towards both cleanup and rubble clearance. We wanted to make sure first that these monies were not going to duplicative efforts. So in other words, if insurance coverage was already covering the matter, we didn't want to, again, go in with our own monies ourselves. But we view this $2 million as a very important allocation for public health, for public safety, and then for economic growth and revitalization along some of these corridors that were hardest-hit sadly both by COVID-19, as well as the unrest following George Floyd's killing. The other $5 million goes towards our Commercial Property Development Fund. That is a fund that is geared towards putting economic inclusion into action. It is a fund towards allowing for the necessary patient capital and gap filler to allow would-be developers, would-be business owners, to not just own the business, but own the real estate. This is an anti-gentrification measure. This is a measure to ensure that business owners and community that have made these corridors wonderful to begin with can continue to stay there. And so that'll certainly be part of my budget proposal.
Can you talk about the terms on the $5 million loans? Like what kind of loan terms are you...
The Commercial Property Development Fund, by and large, is not a loan, is not structured as a full loan. I'll let Mr. Terrill, perhaps, or Mr. Hansen, talk about it a little bit more. But these are... The terms are very minimally restricted. They allow for that fine end piece of gap filler to ultimately own the property itself. And if you want to provide, or Eric, if you want to provide something additional, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim Terrill, T-E-R-R-E-L-L. And I'm a program supervisor at CPED, City of Minneapolis.
And what's CPED?
I'm sorry. The Department of Community Planning and Economic Development, headed by Andrea in the back, and I'm a part of the economic development team headed by Eric Hansen.
Thank you.
Certainly. Commercial Property Development Fund, investment in properties are structured as forgivable loans. They are subordinated to other types of financing so that a property owner or developer is able to obtain first mortgage financing. Ours would be in a second or third position and thus be treated as equity. There are no payments on the loan. There's no interest and no accrual of interest. And in terms of how it is ultimately repaid, if the property stays in the hands of the developer and/or his or her heirs, whether that's individuals or institutional heirs, after 40 years, the loan is forgiven. If it is sold for profit or transferred before that time, then the city simply gets its original investment back. So a $1 million or an $800,000 loan through the Commercial Property Development Fund, building sells in 18 years, and the city would get its $800,000 back. Banks and other lenders treat that as equity or near equity, and so, as the mayor indicated in his comments, it facilitates development that couldn't happen otherwise, quite frankly, because the properties in the challenged communities, the properties owned by developers of color without deep equity investments, aren't able to service the level of debt that they need to finish projects and aren't able to get the debt because they can't service it. So as the mayor indicated, this is gap financing. It is near equity. It is a loan that is forgiven, provided the city reaps that 40-year benefit of keeping the project in the hands of a community member.
And if you can identify projects that will be participating in that $5 million already?
Sure. As the mayor indicated, we closed on a loan to the 927 Building LLC under these terms a week ago Friday.
So that's part of this $5 million already?
That's part of the 2.9 million that was the original seed.
This is $5 billion extra. What was the name of the place that got that money?
The building is 927 West Broadway. The name of the entity is the 927 Building LLC, and that's all in the public record part of our LIMs, Public Record System, for additional details. That loan was approved some time ago and just closed a week ago Friday.
Are there targets already for the $5 million extra that we can...
Yes, but it's not completely allocated. In fact, the targets are just that, they're suggestions, as the mayor indicated, from the Coalition, projects that have been assembled by many of our partners and recommended, projects that are in CPED's pipeline already. And so we are aware of some, and then others, as there's more publicity about the Commercial Property Development Fund, I'm sure we'll become aware of projects that are unknown to us now.
And how many projects do you envision that $5 million actually will come?
This is meant to do larger projects, and so the average size could be anywhere from 200,000 to a million, depending on how much we have. And from there, it's just a matter of dividing it up based on the size of the projects.
Can you identify any of the additional projects that might be part of this heading in the $5 million?
Again, the mayor mentioned one that's on the council agenda this week, Baldwin Square, and the details are already a part of the legislative management system.
Where is Baldwin Square, please?
Roughly 42nd and Fremont?
Or is it open north?
Pardon?
42nd and Fremont Avenue North?
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry.
Can you talk about the $10 million demolition fund? You mentioned 16 projects, 16 properties that are already at least short $100,000 for the current demolition and removal of debris. So is this to really strictly going to those 16 properties? And can you lay out sort of how that process is gonna work?
Sure. The... I'm probably gonna kick it... Steve, is this best for you in a second?
Sure.
So the 16 properties are ones that have already been identified. We can anticipate that, on average, those properties will be just over 100,000 per. In some cases, they will be up to 150,000 or 170,000. So we anticipate that the $2 million will cover about 16 projects, if it is able to cover more than that. And if there's the need that is not being covered by insurance, certainly we will go in that direction. But Mr. Poor, if you could add additional, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Stephen Poor. I'm Director of Development Services in the Community Planning and Economic Development, Department of the City. So we've identified, over the past several weeks, about 16 properties that seem to be in a persistent state of nothing happening. And so the mayor has been giving us direction to work to find some solutions here, and we've been looking for finance to help bridge the gap on getting these sites cleared and then frankly getting the soil removed. The cost of... The highest cost of the process appears to be that most of the soil is considered contaminated by the state. So when you have these older structures, a lot of different systems in them, maybe asbestos, maybe old generators with PCB, the soil is often contaminated after a complete loss of the fire. And the cost comes from excavating that soil and getting it to a toxic landfill, to be honest. So we also know that insurance always takes longer to get paid out than would be to everybody's satisfaction. And so we continue to work with the property owners, the insurance adjusters, and we're hopeful that their payments will at least go to some way to help clear these sites. Then the city would be able to bridge the difference through this program to get the sites cleaned up and stabilized.
Steve, can you... I'm sorry. Do you have a copy? Yeah. Can you give us a list of 16 properties?
We can give that to you afterwards. Yeah.
Have those properties already been notified?
No, they haven't. So Minneapolis chose not to go out and write letters to clean up people's properties right after the unrest. We figured they had a lot to deal with. We had gone out and done a lot of work to stabilize the worst sites. We will try to stick to the regular rule of order on that by notifying property owners that they need to clean the property up. However, we will also let them know that we're here to assist them, to help bridge gaps, and in some cases, may have a more robust and significant role in getting those sites cleared. But there is a process normally where we notify the property owners. We give them some time to clean up the site, and we will have to notify them at some point, but it's really more of engaging with a conversation on them to solve the problem. We're not out here to write orders threatening to do things or else. That's not the tenor of what we're going to do. We also don't intend to write additional cleanup orders to other properties at this time. We see that progress is being made on many of these properties as property owners are able to get insurance money released and have more wherewithal to do a property. So we're really just gonna focus on these 16 substantial sites.
When are you gonna start notifying?
We will look at the letter that we're going to send out. As I said, we have to kind of tailor it a little bit to the circumstance that we're operating in, and we would hope that those letters would go out at some point this week.
This week?
Yeah.
So a lot of those projects are stalled because the bids are so high that they are, in some cases, two or three times what they're getting for insurance. And the property owners have suggested that some of this cost could be kept low. If the city either bundled these projects together, or did some of the demolition work, you know, as the city contractor, the city's already gone in on some of these sites and has done demolition work, has knocked down structures that were damaged during the riots. So it seems like there could be a path there to address some of those issues?
Yeah. I think I changed the characterization. The city has contracted with existing wrecking contractors to go in and have sites cleaned. So it wasn't city crews after the initial unrest where Public Works was clearing debris from right away in some other areas. We've really gone about contracting with licensed wrecking contractors to do, as you described, the kind of knockdown work, making sure that there's not pieces of structures that are adjacent to right away that could endanger adjacent property, those kind of scenarios. We know there's been some talk about possible inflated costs around wrecking. We have not seen that, actually. We've seen about the same price for the work being done that we've seen in other years. There is a lot of work to be done out there. The contractors are busy. I also just suggest that Minneapolis had some larger sites relative to maybe our sister city. And so it's harder to get a coalition of contractors to take these sites. It's really better to work with individual contractors based on the size and scale of the problem at a site. Some contractors just have bigger equipment and more wherewithal to do the work. So we will put these out for bid. There is a bidding process that will happen. We typically get three bids for a site, and we look at the capacity of the wrecking firm, the cost. We will absolutely be reaching out to minority contractors... We will absolutely be reaching out to minority contractors, inviting them to seek bids as well.
So the city will be actually, so instead of these individual property owners negotiating with demolition contractors themselves, the city's going to take over that responsibility to make sure that these costs are kept as low as possible?
No, I don't think that's the way to look at it. The regular rule is that the city, the folks may or may not have been working with their insurance company, they may or may not have already been talking to a wrecking contractor. We've had some of those cases. When an order goes out, I think that it's going to focus the property owner to resolve the problem. At that point, I would say the city, if we're toward, yeah, you go ahead and do it, I don't have the wherewithal to deliver it, then at that point, the city would ask for bids on these. But we still have to work with the property owners to give them a chance to work through their insurance and the issue. But we know that there's some gap in finances and resources.
Probably got time for one more question. How do you feel overall about progress in general? I mean, I think we've been, it improved, not, not only, he was solicitable, he was huge list of stuff that was damaged in the aftermath of, you know...
Before I get to mayor, I feel that we have made good progress because some of the problem has diminished in that people have had time to get insurance and to get some sites cleaned. We all know it's just been a terrible situation and, you know, put yourself in their shoes with everything going on. So I'm actually pleased that we have seen some progress on the private side, and I'm extremely pleased that we're taking this initiative today and to get on this problem. I'm very, very optimistic that we'll be able to make a difference out there on the ground.
So much of this has been planned out, not just in the last several weeks, but in the last three or four months. We wanted private property owners to be able to file their insurance claims. We know that we're in a tenuous financial position at the city as numerous businesses throughout our region are experiencing. And we didn't want to be contributing unnecessary monies before we knew that those monies wouldn't be covered by some other external party. So now is the right time to step up. We want to expedite recovery as much as possible, and we want to get right back on the right track.
So the city's identified about eight, I think 100 properties were either destroyed or severely damaged during the riots. You've identified 16 that are short on funds. It seems likely that you may identify additional properties, not dozens of additional properties, where they're going to fall short on M E M funds for demolition of your building. So can you talk about how that plays out?
Well, the number that you cited includes a broad range of damaged properties, everything from maybe broken windows to total demolition. And so what we're talking about as far as this goes is rubble clearance specifically, which is more towards the demolition, total demolition end of the spectrum. And that's where we want to be concentrating a lot of the resources, as much of the, many of the other properties, in some cases, have already been refurbished and repaired. But we want to jump in now to make sure that, again, those three key areas of public health, economy rebuild, as well as public safety are insured.
So you don't think there are more than 16 sites?
I'm sure there are more than. I don't, I can't give you the exact figure right now. Those 16 sites are those are the ones that we've got and we are well aware of.
I would just say, these are the most substantial sites.
Those are?
Where they're burned down, down under ground level, even in the foundation. There's other levels of damage throughout the city, as we all know, but these are really the most substantial sites that, without some intervention, are probably not going to get cleaned up properly.
So as Mr. Poor said, those 16 sites are the ones that required some form of substantial intervention. And as he also mentioned, much of them also had some form of pollution at the ground level as well, which, under state law, requires us to remove the dirt itself and put it in a landfill.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I hope she continues to grow.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, see you soon.
Doctor, yeah. I'm not going to be sound. I never do.[1344.13]